All right, hi everybody, we're running a few minutes late with our call in. On the screen, of course, is the public access phone number and meeting number so you can call into the meeting. We're going to start our meeting number 10, May 18th, 2020, at the Thomas J. Smith Council Chamber of City Hall. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, roll call when you're ready, please.
Kreiter?
Hello?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
Muffin?
Raker?
Here. Here. All right, first up on tonight's agenda, once again, I will point out, if you look at the screen, if you're streaming, the phone number is there and the meeting number is there. First up is our consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent today, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous minutes, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarette permits, reports and bonds, and four resolutions. Resolution number one, approving maintenance and operation of the public infrastructure associated with the indoor recreational facility. Resolution number two, to install stop signs at intersections 7th Street and Walnut Street. Resolution number three, approving purchase of type 1 ambulance for the Burlington Fire Department. Number four, resolution approving the amended agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and the Burlington, West Burlington area Chamber of Commerce for hotel motel tax distribution. And we're setting a date for a public hearing, June 1st, 2020, for considerations of plans and specifications for the 2025 In Valley Street parking lot project. Is there anyone online, Jess, unmute him for a second? Is there anyone online that would like to have one of these items removed from the consent Hearing none, council? Okay, can we get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all items listed under Item 1, under the consent agenda.
Second. When you're ready, Kathleen.
Kreiter?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, first up, we've got a hearing for the statement, is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 919 North 8th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Motion to...
Mr. Tisner? All right. This is property on Northeast Street, just north of Spring Street, that the city acquired through the abandoned building program, which generally means it does need some work prior to occupancy. So, this is kind of an overview of the home, go through the conditions of the sale. So, house shall be rehabbed to the housing occupancy standards or demolished as required. Prior to any occupancy of the structure, it does need to be rehabbed to those housing occupancy standards. Someone can't buy a property, move in and fix it up, it has to be fixed up prior to any occupancy. Defective items, especially plumbing electrical work, has to be signed off by licensed electrician and plumber, that they meet or are brought up to city code. Off-street parking shall accommodate two vehicles, sidewalks improved as necessary. All permits shall be received and codes met for work prior to occupancy of the home. Purchaser shall maintain property and yard and hold insurance on the property upon approval by, of sale by city council. Work shall be started within 60 days. Property shall be rehabbed, it shall be completed within 180 days of approval of city council, with an extension of another 180 days granted by the Development Department if significant progress is being made. Property shall be transferred by quick claim deed upon substantial completion of rehab. Purchaser, again, has to receive permits, they have to pay a minimum of 500 or 10% down, whichever is greater of the purchase price. Entire amount shall be paid within 30 days of approval of sale by city council. Currently, we have, this is Northeast, one bid in the amount of $500 from Bob and Seth Witten.
Okay. If you would unmute it, Jess. So, we are currently accepting bids on 919 North 8th Street. We have an opening bid from Bob and Seth Witten for $500. Is there anybody else that would like to bid on this property?
Mohammed Nwutzi here, I'll give you $1,000.
Okay, Mohammed, 1,000. Would anybody like to outbid Mohammed, please? Anyone? You have them all unmuted, right, Jess? Okay, I want to make sure that we're, we're going to be extra careful just because everybody's calling in, so we're going to ask several times. Is there anybody else that would like to bid more than $1,000 for this property?
Ross and Seth Witten, 1,100.
Okay, Mr. Witten's at 1,100. Anybody like to bid more than 1,100? Anybody like to bid more than 1,100, please?
Mohammed Nwutzi, 1,500.
1,500 to Mr. Nwutzi, thank you, Mohammed. Any more bids on this property? We're at 1,500. Are there any more bids on this property for 919 North 8th Street? One last call, any more bids for this property at 919 North 8th Street? We're sitting at 1,500, going once. Going twice. Sold. Mr. Mohammed Nwutzi bought that building for 1,500. Okay, Linda, so we need...
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second. Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a motion, the hearing...
No, you need to do your resolution first.
Resolution? Stand corrected, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 919 North 8th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Now, okay.
Okay. Make sure I get the right one here. To amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 919 North 8th Street, the City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, the property has been sold to Mohammed, and I'll probably pronounce it wrong, Nwutzi 2714 Bittersweet, for $1,500.
All right.
Is that Raker's second?
Yes, Raker's second. When you're ready.
Kreiter?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
And then the original resolution as amended.
Is that me?
I just need you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's okay.
Rachel, repeat that, please.
Original resolution as amended.
Thank you.
Kreiter?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes. Okay, motion passed. On to number two. This is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 1006 Elm Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisner?
This again is property at 1006 Elm Street, located north of Elm, between Central and South 10th Street. Similar conditions as prior. House has to be rehabbed to occupancy standards prior to anyone moving into the home, do have to do that before you can move into the home. Rehabbed items have to be inspected. Licensed plumber and electrician have to sign off that items meet or are brought up to city code. Sidewalks, parking areas as needed, need to be improved. All codes shall be met and permits shall be received. Work shall be started within 60 days and they have 180 days to complete rehab on the property. This one, again, does need quite a bit of work, it is a smaller lot, a smaller house, but we do have one bid for the property from Don Harder in the amount of $500. I would state, any purchaser that purchases the property, normally they're here in person, we just ask them to get ahold of the Development Department tomorrow after their purchase of the property.
Okay. All right. We're getting ready to, for those of you online, we are getting ready to sell this property, 1006 Elm Street. We have an opening bid from Don Harder at $500. Is there anyone that would like to top that bid?
I did hear from Peter, that Don was having a hard time calling in.
Okay. Yeah, Don, if you're having a tough time calling in, the phone number is 646-749-3122, meeting number is 791-645-725. Is there anybody out there that would like to top that bid of $500 on 1006 Elm Street? And they're all unmuted, right, Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, that's all right, just double checking. Anybody would like to purchase more? We're going to echo Shane McCamell, it's going to make someone a lovely home. If anybody would like to bid more than 500, please speak up now.
Jordan Bowley, 600.
Okay, Jordan. Jordan, is your, how's your last name spelled? Oh, thank you. All right, we have a bid from Jordan Bowley for 600. Mr. Harder, you could also text my phone, 759-1831. If you want to do that, I'll take your bids online. So, anybody would like to top $600 on this property, 1006 Elm Street?
Yeah, Mr. Harder?
Mr. Harder, yes, sir?
1018 Monticello, I'm putting in a bid of 1,000.
Okay, 1,000 to Mr. Harder. Is anybody, anybody would like to top $1,000 for this particular property? 1006 Elm Street? Anybody like to go over $1,000 for a bid? Going to call one more time. Anybody like to go over $1,000 for this property, 1006 Elm Street? Going once.
What is the address to bid?
1006 Elm Street.
And we're sitting at $1,000.
We've got a picture of it up online, if that helps.
Two-bedroom, one bath, on a 53 by 40-foot lot, so very small lot.
Did you get that, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to...
1,200.
1,200, is this Mr. Nwutzi?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're at 1,200, we're at $1,200 with Mr. Nwutzi. Would anybody like to top 1,200?
1,300, Don Harder, 1018 Monticello.
Got you, Mr. Harder. Now, we're at 1,300 on 1006 Elm Street. Anybody like to top 1,300?
Mr. Harder, that's a nice job, he just didn't have this one.
There's one bidder out. They're at 1,300. Does anybody like to top that bid? Going once? Going twice? And going third time, you're sold to Mr. Harder for 1,300. Ready for you.
Your Honor, I have a motion at the hearing regarding the consideration of sale of property locally known as 1006 Elm Street, in the City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions be closed.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Kreiter?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of the property locally known as 1006 Elm Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions be sold to...
No, that's the other one.
No, that's the other one, never mind.
Second.
Thank you.
Now, you're done?
Now, you're ready.
Now, I'm ready.
Yes.
Bear with me, first time I've done this. To amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1006 Elm Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, this property will be sold to Mr., what is it?
Harder.
Don Harder?
Don Harder.
Don Harder of 1018 Monticello, Burlington, Iowa, for the amount of 1,300. Congratulations.
Second.
Second.
Kathleen?
Kreiter?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
And now the resolution as amended.
As amended.
Kreiter?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. All right, make sure to please contact the Development Office tomorrow, you lucky bidders, thank you.
Would say, if they're interested, we do have other properties that are for sale, so if they are interested in other properties, anyone out there, please contact our department, we'll let you know what's available. It's on our website, we try and update that as well, so...
Sounds great, thank you, Eric. All right, moving on to number three, consideration for an application for a Housing Sustainability Grant for the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program.
That's not true.
Mm-hmm.
Can we try to identify the two callers that we have, we're expecting us to...
Oh, we are, okay, let's, we're going to try, we're going to take a break and try to identify two callers.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, could you identify yourself? This is a City Council meeting. If you can hear my voice.
Next one?
Okay, next one. Hi, can you identify yourself if you can hear my voice?
Sarah Decox with Southeastern Regional Planning Commission.
Hi, Sarah, how are you today?
Good.
Good, all right, we're getting this sorted out. Do you want to take one more stab, Jessica, at the other one, or no?
Um, we should be okay.
Okay, all right, good. Hang on, we're going to discuss this issue right now.
So, Sarah's going to probably go through most of this, but we're looking to apply for a Community Development Block Grant for the South Hill area, as shown here. We did apply for this grant last year and did not receive funds, but did identify some residents, homeowners in the area that were interested in the program and have reached out to some of those again, and they remain interested. This is for rehab of existing owner-occupied homes, primarily exterior improvements, siding, windows, roofing. They do have to meet income requirements, and they, I guess, are going through the pre-qualification process, but I'll let Sarah take it over and I can fill in any other information as needed.
Ready?
Like Eric said, we applied for, the city applied for this grant last year, we were not successful in receiving the grant, so we decided to apply again this year for the safe area and for the safe homeowners who were interested. So, the need for the activity was identified by the Southeastern Regional Planning Commission staff and the City of Burlington. It's also a goal of the Des Moines County Housing Needs Assessment to identify and utilize rehab programs to benefit low-to-moderate income families through different grant opportunities. The City of Burlington will apply with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Community Development Block Grant. The grants are due, they are due July 1st, however, they're going to be timestamped when they are received, so we've been working on these grants to get them in well before the July 1st deadline, hoping maybe to get the Burlington one submitted before the end of May. That way, it'll be in a higher order when they start receiving, or restart reviewing those on July 1st. The City of Burlington will request $238,994,000 from the Iowa Economic Development Authority for that housing grant. All of the households that receive these grant funds will have to be below 80% of the median family income for Des Moines County. So, for example, a household of one would have to make below the $38,850 a year, a household of four would have to make below $55,500. The activity will take place in the City of Burlington. All of our applicants at this time are in that neighborhood we applied for last year, which is over by Grant School. Under the rehab process, the Housing Sustainability Grant, households will not permanently be displaced, some of them may temporarily be displaced if we are working on interior items such as lead. Coordination will be between the contractor and homeowner to prevent displacement possible. If they do have to be temporarily relocated for the lead hazards, this will be an expense that is paid for out of the Housing Sustainability Grant. The grant will be used to stabilize homes in Burlington. They will cover things such as gutters, roofs, spacious offices, windows, doors, siding, foundation repair, stairwears, stairways, and lead hazard reduction. The only thing that they are going to allow us to do with this grant, interior, is the lead hazard remediation, stabilizing the lead in the interior of the home. So, that's the only interior items that they will allow with this new grant, and we can't do new construction, landscaping, or appliances. So, there's been a couple of different changes this year than with this grant that some of you would remember. It's primarily focusing on exterior items. They also did away, before we had any minimum rehab standards, they have removed those. So, if we had a house before that needed $40,000 worth of rehab, we would have to end up walking away from that property, and now they're just allowing us to do what we can. So, I think that will allow us to do more homes, at least get some of those rehab items checked off the box, so maybe the homeowner can do some of the other ones down the road. We already have our six homeowners selected, we've been working hard with finding homeowners in that area and already have all of them, all the verifications completed, and they're ready to go with the application. Another part of the application is we have to complete a housing needs assessment, this is only for the purpose of this grant application. So, I sat down with city staff a couple weeks ago and at the Planning Commission meeting and asked for different suggestions of what they felt were needs of LMI persons in the community, other community needs, and then also what planned activities were to address those needs. And I think you already have this, I'll just go, I'll just highlight some of the, the needs of LMI persons. The group felt more affordable rentals, enforcing property maintenance codes, more funds for individuals wanting to purchase a house for, for down payment for LMI households, affordable housing, more affordable housing for younger families, and then different programs to increase the current housing stock in Burlington. So, other community needs, senior housing was a need that we are seeing, the age of the housing stock in Burlington, so, and funds for preserving and rehabbing existing homes was in importance to the group, and then to maybe utilize the urban revitalization tax exemption program, and then also TIP, were other ideas for community development. Planned activities for LMI individuals, the cities are already a part of Great River Housing Trust Fund, so we get calls for individuals needing assistance with rehab. We are also planning on applying for another rehab program with the Federal Home Loan Base. This would address additional rehab projects in the community. The city has utilized the CDBG grants before, and then also individuals can call and use Community Actions Weatherization Program. Burlington also has a Healthy Neighborhood Program that they're starting, looking on doing some infill development with the Housing Trust Fund. I know currently we're working with SDC to build a house on infill development, and then they are actually looking to partner with the high school to build one next fall. So, that's kind of what the group kind of came up with, ideas for LMI persons in the community, and then ways to maybe address some of those needs. Is there any questions about the grant application process?
Counsel, you have any questions? Jessica, would you unmute it, and I can ask the audience? Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions about this grant process? Any thoughts or concerns? Hearing none? Counsel doesn't have any, I think we're good?
Just one note, there's no local match required for this grant, which is a good thing, so...
That's an outstanding thing. Yep. Okay, if there's no more discussion, can I get a motion to close, please?
Is that me?
Yep.
I'm sleeping over here. Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Thank you, Sarah. When you're ready, Kathleen.
Kreiter?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving an application for Housing Sustainability Grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Kreiter?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Okay, next up is this...
Somebody says I call down, I call down.
Okay. Next up is consideration for the 2019-2020 Budget Amendment Number 1. Stephanie, Mrs. Stucker, come right up.
So, in the packet is the budget amendment number one. We published it in the paper as required, it was in the Hawkeye on May 6th. So, I can just go through some of the line items that we are increasing. On the revenue side, we're increasing the other financing sources, that's because we refunded two bonds, and that amount is $10,052,000. And then we also, I'm increasing the transfer slightly by $27,500. We had a land purchase, and we're going to transfer the money to pay for that. On the expenditure side, the large increase is, again, we refund the bonds, so we get the money in, but then we have to pay it out June 1st. So, I've increased that for the same amount, the $10,000, $52,000, for those refunding bond fees that weren't included. Also, on the increases for public safety, the total increase for that amount, for that budget line item is $513,000. Over half of that is due to the fire GMT payment, so this is where we're getting, we're getting the revenue in, but we also have to pay it out, so that was an unbudgeted expense. The police, we had some expenses, building expenses that were a little bit over overtime, and then training, as we keep having some turnover, it's hard to, you know, know exactly a year and a half ago what kind of turnover, so we've increased that. And then, the building code under public safety, we are going to, got a couple grants, and we're going to do a few more demos this year than we originally had budgeted. On the public works function side, we're going to increase that by $120,000, and that is part, some consulting increased, engineering overtime, and then the airport capital contribution. We bonded for majority of that, but we did have a little bit extra that we, that paid, that we got paid out of the general fund, so I'm increasing that. Capital projects is increasing, 3.7 million. That happens to be like, the flood expense, we're almost to $1 million now on this, that we've incurred this fiscal year, that of course, we didn't have budgeted last year, that we're seeking fee of reimbursement. The Tiger Grant, that's about $1,005,000, that's consulting expenses, wasn't exactly in this budget with the timing of the grant, you know, it was one of those, so... And then the airport contribution is in there, and then the TAMA building refund, where we held... And then the TAMA building refund, where we held that money, that was to the tune of like seven hundred thousand, until they complied with what they needed to do then. Again, that's an expense, we had to cut a check and write it back to them. So, that's an in and out in our books, but it's still, I have to budget for the, on the expense side. General government, we, that's increasing a hundred and seven thousand five hundred. We had some city hall repairs. Insurance was a little bit more than we had budgeted and we had that land purchase. The community and economic development, that's increasing by a hundred and eighty-two thousand. That's for some professional services. And then the targeted jobs, that program again, is where the companies are sending us the money. We're turning around and sending it back, but we estimate it. So, I want to increase it this year because it's been a little bit higher. And then in solid waste, the vehicle purchase, seventy-five thousand was over budget. So, does anybody have any questions?
Is there anybody, anybody in the audience have any questions about the budget amendment?
You take my phone call? Are you taking my phone call?
Yes, we're taking your phone call, yes, sir.
What about spring cleanup? Yeah, it's our spring cleanup, what about spring cleanup?
We'll address that at another time. You would, if you, give me your, if you would give me your name and.
I already have my, I already have my, I already have my cleanup, so why are we taking that?
It's Shane.
I have my cleanup set up, first spring cleanup.
All right, well, if you give me your name and address, I'll give you a call and we'll discuss it.
Can you, can you give me your number?
Sure. You ready?
Yeah, give me your number, I'll call you after I'm ready.
All right, seven five nine, one eight three one.
Is it, is it the mayor?
Yes.
This is the mayor?
This is, this is John Phillips, yes, sir.
Are you the black gentleman or the other guy?
No, I'm the other bald guy.
Okay, I was just, wanted to, I just wanted to make sure I knew who I was talking to. I know both of you guys are bald, I, you know, I just know that. I have new mayor, and the old mayor was black, we have new mayor's wife, but, you know, I actually heard they said that white mayor is black, there's been a whole lot where I, I don't know.
All right, Shane, that's enough.
I can, I can call you, I can call you.
You can call me, yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, fine, fine, you're doing a good job. I, I just wanted to know you're doing a good job, okay?
All right, thank you, sir. Look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, you're doing a good job, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Bye. Is there any other concerns or questions on the budget rate, amendment? Thank you, Steph. Counsel, none, can we get a motion? Yes, Your Honor, motion to close.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes, please.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the 2019-2020 Budget Amendment Number One. When you're ready, Kathleen.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, next up. Considerations of Plans and Specifications for the 2020 Seal Coat Streets Project.
Good evening. This public hearing will go over the plans and specifications for the 2020 Seal Coat Project. So, Seal Coat is a, it's a type of road surface that we have in town. We have rock base and then we have an oil emulsion and then a rock cap on top. After the rock packs down, it looks very similar to asphalt, but we don't have as much base prep. It's our cheapest surface product that we have out there. And we were in the past on a kind of a seven-year rotation to try and get all those redone. That has been extended a little bit just because of some of the costs that we ran into. We, we, the road, the road use tax fund is the way we pay for this. The estimated project cost in front of you is three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The roadways that we are attempting to get done with this project is on the map overhead. As you can see, it's several different various streets, differs, a little bit different from last year where we had kind of just two main roads that we worked on. So, it will be in the south part of town, trying to take care of these roads. So, as soon as we bid out this project here, we should get it back. And this project isn't as time sensitive as trying to get on an asphalt list, a little different set of contractors. So, I can answer any questions.
You want to mute it, Jess? Are there any questions regarding the Seal Coat Project? Any questions regarding the Seal Coat Streets Project? Hearing none, counsel, do you have any questions? All right, thank you, Nick, appreciate it. Can I get a motion? Your Honor, motion to close.
Second.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2020 Seal Coat Streets Project. When you're ready, Kathleen.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Next up is Considerations of Plans and Specifications for the 2019 ADA Ramp Improvement Project. Are you going to want to address both of these?
I will just at least highlight that there are two different projects that are covering two similar type of things. The reason for the distinction of the 2019 ADA Project, as you remember, is a project that we bid out last, late last summer. Due, we had one bid that we received and it was well over our estimate at that time. We decided to reject all bids and then rebid it again, so that's what this is. So, the project for the 2019, the main focus of that project is some ADA compliance work that needed to happen around the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. Rather than combine it with that project due to timing, we elected and we need to complete this project to try and fulfill some of that obligation that we had discussed with the Department of Transportation. This project is estimated at seventy thousand dollars. And it also includes some roadway, or some ADA ramp off of West Avenue and then down on Barrett. So, this is a smaller project, but it is road use tax that's going to fund this project here. So, I will leave the next conversation to next hearing.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding the 2019 ADA Ramp Improvement Project from those online? Any questions on the 2019 ADA Ramp Improvement Project? Counsel? No? Can we get a motion? Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specs for the 2019 ADA Ramp Improvement Project. Yes, ma'am.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, next up is Considerations and Plans for, Specifications for the 2020 ADA Ramp Improvement Project. Mr. McRae, please.
This project is, is, will use our general obligation funds and that differs from the last project. This project follows, it's in the North Hill area, follows our asphalt project that we just completed. Typically, we bid those projects out together, but due to timing of design, we wanted to get that asphalt project rolling. And actually, in their construction phasing, when they do that, they're kind of separate work anyway. We just knew that we had to follow up with this project. This project is a little bit higher cost at three hundred and twenty thousand to follow up and get those ADA ramps. There's quite a few in that North Hill area that butt up against the new asphalt. So, something I didn't really cover in the, in the previous one is we go in and we replace the ramps with the truncated dome panels, which are the, kind of the bubbled looking pieces. And then we actually have to go to the, kind of the landing and then even a couple further panels. So, quite a bit of work up in that area, so that's kind of the reason why you're seeing that larger number on that type of project, so.
Is anybody online have any questions about the 2020 ADA Project? Any questions about the 2020 ADA Ramp Improvement Project? None, hearing none, counsel? No, can we get a motion? Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen, when you're ready.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specs for the 2020 ADA Ramp Improvement Project.
Second.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
All right, moving on to ordinances. First up is a motion, or that's for you, Robert, ordinance?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amendment to ordinance number three two two zero, an ordinance creating the Sunrise West planning and development PUD overlay district by removing Outlot G from the Sunrise West PUD.
I need a second.
Second.
No changes from the previous reading. Sunrise West is looking to sell this piece of property and not develop it as part of their duplex condominium development. So, that would take it out of the Sunrise West PUD ordinance, so it could be governed by a separate zoning ordinance, so.
Okay. Is there any, Jessica, please. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions about this ordinance? Second reading of ordinance three two two zero. Hearing none, counsel? Kathleen, you can vote when you're ready.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Number two.
All right, Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance rezoning Block Four of Swisher subdivision and Outlot G of fourth addition to Sunrise West subdivision from R1, single-family residential, to R4, multifamily residential with a planned unit development overlay zone, the Beverly Place PUD, as allowed by the zoning code of the city of Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
So, again, no changes from the previous reading. This would rezone these lots to R4 with a PUD overlay to allow for multifamily senior living housing development on this site. The planning commission again did vote five to one to recommend approval with one abstain, with the condition that plan drives through the development occur with the first phase. They are looking to build three buildings, four phases of cooperative type development, similar to the Village Cooperative at the corner of Mason and Cambridge Drive, that type of setting. There are some conditions or provisions within the PUD that increase the setbacks on all sides, primarily the west side to a hundred feet and the south side to seventy-five feet, and also including a fifty-foot landscape buffer on that west and south sides as well, with a pedestrian sidewalk connection from Cambridge back to Sequoia. They do still have to go through the preliminary and final plating process if this is approved prior to starting construction, with the connection of Public Streets, Horizon Street down to Dale Street, and then Cambridge Street over to the lot to the east. Again, the interior drives would all remain private for this development. It is looking to have a higher quality design and do a lot of landscaping in the area. The roof height, it is planned to be a four-story building with a similar roof height to the three-story Village Cooperative. Maximum eighty dwelling units could be in this development. If they, that wasn't specified, just based on R4 zoning, it could be in excess of a hundred and ten dwelling units. So, we wanted to reduce that down for the neighborhood as well. It does follow some of the provisions of the previously approved 1999 plan for the area, but there have been deviations over the years, so it's trying to fit what's been deviated in the past with what was planned. So, having a connection point to allow that connection to Mason Road through Horizon, coming into Dale down to Sequoia and Mason Road, and then the future connection to Cambridge on the east side, which will connect to north-south Cambridge down to Mason Road. So, trying to make those connections as development occurs isn't always the easiest thing to do, fitting developments in. But they are looking to have, connect up some of those dead-end drives and then allow for future connection.
Okay. Is there anybody on, online in the audience that has a question regarding this second reading of the ordinance for the Beverly Place PUD? Hearing none, counsel? Kathleen, can let's, let's vote, please.
Craig, sir?
Yes, please.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Hi.
Number three.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary, preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating a southern portion of Connor Avenue Right-Away located north of Core Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Skiddas vacating Right-Away, that's not been developed. It has been, I guess, completely surrounded by property ownership of Carly Nelson. They did show ownership of the property at the county records until previously when the city vacated the road, alley Right-Away through there, they went to combine all the lots and realized it hadn't actually been vacated per the county records. So, going back to vacate that Right-Away, again, that will allow this lot to become one large lot. Did receive a call from them, they are looking to start paving on that alley this week, so. That's something that they're looking to do.
Is there, we're looking at a waiver of final reading here, right? Is there anybody in the audience that has any concerns or thoughts on this issue? Anyone, any concerns or thoughts on the ordinance of the Right-Away located north of Core Street? Hearing none, counsel?
Your Honor, I'd like to motion to amend. I'd like to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating a southern portion of Connor Avenue Right-Away located north of Core Street, Burlington, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for a final adoption of an ordinance vacating a southern portion of Connor Avenue Right-Away located north of Core Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
When you're ready, Kathleen.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Has amended.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
All right. Number four.
Number four. I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance of any various sections of Chapter 161 Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
You're busy tonight, Ms. Tisland.
No changes again from the previous reading, just looking to update the housing code, which is what we use to inspect rental properties in Burlington, to more follow in line with the International Residential Code as it pertains to carbon monoxide alarms and smoke alarms. Just so that language is clear on what is required, where it's required, and when changes are made, what changes are needed. The other change to this would add that permit fees may double if we contact someone that has a perceived rental and they don't get a rental permit or clarify the issue within thirty days, so.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions regarding the second reading of the ordinance amendment for Chapter 161? Hearing none, counsel?
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend as well. When you're ready. To amend the motion for the preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 161 Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading and for final adoption of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 161 Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
All right, Kathleen, when you're ready.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes, and now the motion has amended, please.
Craig, sir?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
All right, next up are resolutions. Number one.
All right, resolution awarding contract for the 2020 Virginia Avenue and Sycamore Street stormwater improvements.
Second.
The resolution in front of you would approve a warning contract to Four Seasons excavation in the amount of ninety-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. This project comes in a little bit over bid of the engineer's estimate, which was at eighty-five thousand dollars. As you remember, this project entails some storm sewer work in kind of the two locations, similar to the previous item over by Carly Nelson, Virginia Street, has some water that kind of dumps over the edge. kind of dumps over the edge of the bluff there, and then Sycamore is further and more down and more in the North Hill area, where we have a storm sewer line that is kind of come apart and cause some degradation. So the funding source for this project is out of the sewer fund. We classify it as the miscellaneous sewer project, it's the same type of monies that help fix the, the hole in the Hawkeye storm sewer, so we would recommend a work bid.
Is there anybody in the audience has any questions or concerns about this contract? Hearing none, counsel? All right, let's vote.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
Riker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Number two.
All right, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2020 Senior Center Roof Replacement Project.
The resolution, sorry.
Second.
Sorry.
It's all right.
The resolution in front of you would award contract to Brockway in the amount of sixty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars to replace the current roof at the Senior Center with the rubber roof, some, similar to what we have, it's a new one, it's similar to what we put on the Public Works facility. The estimated project or what we have in the budget is close to eighty thousand, so this project came well under bid for what the amount we thought it would be. Sales tax or lost is the funding mechanism that would pay for this. We've had previous discussions, both the city manager and I have brought this project up as one that, you know, with the concerns about sales tax, but think that the, it's meritous enough to continue forward with it, so I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Nick. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions about the 2020 Senior Center Roof Replacement Project? How many, how many do we have online now? Two, okay. Anybody have any concerns about the 2020 Senior Center Roof Replacement Project? Hearing none, counsel? No? Kathleen, can we vote, please?
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Number three.
All right, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving planes for nonpayment pursuant to chapters ninety-nine, one hundred, and one six of the Burlington Municipal Code.
I need a second. Second.
Mrs. Stupr.
Sure, so this is done annually, these are people that are not paying, mostly are not paying their stormwater fees, which were just new in the last couple years. They aren't currently getting other services through water work, so they just, for some reason, don't like to pay them, and their water doesn't get shut off because they have water from other sources, so this list will get assessed to their property taxes, and we will get there when they pay their property taxes. So the total this year is about twenty-two hundred, and last year it was eighty-seven hundred, so more people are deciding to pay it, that it's not gonna go away, so, but this is just annually, the ones that haven't paid, we will file with the, over at the county so we can get our money.
Okay. Is there anybody online that has any questions about this resolution? Hearing none, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Can we vote? Kathleen, please.
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Number four.
All right, Your Honor, I have a resolution approving Housing Sustainability Grant Administration, Administrative Plan, 2020.
Give me a second.
Second.
Thank you.
So this pairs with the CDBG Housing Sustainability Grant application, they just, IDA wants to make sure that we're, understand and follow all the requirements outlined and described in the CDBG and IEDA program guidance, so this relates to when we administer our grant, these are the provisions that we have to make sure we're following to stay in line with the IEDA and CDBG guidance, so it relates to fair housing and nondiscrimination program assistance, the processes, file documentation, financial management, kind of et cetera, if someone has an issue, kind of their appeal and complaint procedure, so it's just outlining how we're gonna administer the grant, not what rules we're gonna follow.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that has any concerns or thoughts regarding this resolution for approving the House Sustainability Grant Administrative Plan? Hearing none, counsel? No? Kathleen, can we vote, please?
Kreitzer?
Yes.
Graham Murray?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye. Okay, that takes care of our program of work. Now we're open to comments from the audience, we want to hear your thoughts and concerns. Please bear in mind, if it's not on the agenda, we may not discuss it, but we will take your comments under advisement. Is anybody who would like to bring anything before the council at this time?
I would like to ask a question, this is Mark Fisher, about ordinances one and two. We were having some trouble with our audio, and we did not hear, was there a vote to waive the third reading, or will we be having a third reading?
There will be a third reading on this, because we did have a, a couple of previous discussions, we had a, a few for and against, so we'll do three readings on this, sir. So there will be in the next city council meeting.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Any other thoughts or concerns from the online audience? No, okay. Staff, nothing for staff, getting all head nods, no? Don, nothing from you? All right. Anything from counsel?
No, but if they wanted me to review that, we waived on the, the Right Away on Connor, there by Core Street, and the, the other one was for the, the housing code, they just updated, so those are the only two that we waived the readings.
Okay. Do you have anything pro temp?
Just a reminder that we cannot put a second bag of trash out anymore without a tag, and don't use your old containers, those will not be picked up either. Anything else you want me to add, Don? Okay. Lids down.
Fully closed.
Fully closed.
The parking, the parking is back to being enforced now downtown as well, folks. Matt?
This is the last council meeting between now and our next election, so I just want to remind folks to vote.
Okay.
I came up quick.
Mr. Kreitzer?
I got nothing, you know, we, we made it through the school year, I think, and things didn't go according to plan, but seems like most of our kiddos are doing good, and I hope everybody enjoys their summer, and look forward to getting things back to normal.